Hello, everybody. I'm here today with Mel Witherspoon. He is a longtime member of Erie City Council. And also, he is the founder of Spoon's Summer Basketball League for Youth. How are you today, Mr. Witherspoon?
Fine, fine, Mr. Troop. I'm doing real good. Thank you for asking.
Good. So, uh, Mr. Witherspoon, thanks for being here today. We appreciate you taking your time out today to do this with us today.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day today. Uh, couldn't ask for a better day.
So, uh, Mr. Witherspoon, let's talk about, um, where you grew up at, what city, what state, maybe a little bit about the neighborhood you grew up, grew up in.
Oh, that's, that's interesting. Uh, I think about it all the time. I grew up in Newark, New Jersey, uh, what we call the Central Ward, which is the largest ward in the city. Uh, ninety percent, uh, black in the Central Ward. And of course, there were issues similar to they. Uh, we call them clubs today. They call them gangs and, uh, they, they were evident. The good thing about our clubs or gangs, uh, we didn't shoot anybody. Now, we did a lot of fist fighting in, uh, various territories. Uh, but we, we didn't, we didn't kill nobody.
Right, right. Nobody got shot.
Nobody got shot.
Right, right. So, uh, what brought you to Erie PA initially?
Erie PA, uh, I got here, I got here by accident. Let me explain that. Uh, in playing ball in Newark, New Jersey, and spending a lot of time on the New York City courts. I made All-City First Team in Newark, All-City First Team All-County Honorable Mention, All-State in basketball, football, and baseball. Uh, to my knowledge, I'm the only one who has done that at least at Central High, uh, since I graduated. Playing in New York City, uh, I received a phone call one day. And this guy, all I know him by his name is Spook. Uh, my friend Cal Graham, uh, knew him well. And evidently, he was recruiting for junior colleges.
Okay.
And I committed to him. I said, "Yeah." He said, "Well, I got, I can get you to Scotts Bluff Junior College in Scotts Bluff, Nebraska." I said, "Where's that and what the heck are you talking about?" So I did look it up, and it did exist. And, uh, I had some other scholarships.
Right.
Uh, however, hindsight's twenty twenty. I did not have that grade average to go to the schools that recruited me. That was Rutgers, uh, Seton Hall, uh, and a few others, uh, in Newark. So I took that and I went out to Nebraska. I played football and basketball there.
Okay.
Uh, again, I made the All-Four JC in basketball. I made the All-Four JC in football. There was an experience that I had never had. In Nebraska, Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, the third, third day there, uh, myself, two guys from the Bronx, two guys from Kentucky. Uh, we found out that you can walk into a sports store and buy a gun. And so, we did, because we couldn't get one where we came from.
Right, right.
So we got it just to have it. I've told this story and it touches me every time, but I'll try to get through it. My brother was shot in New York City with a double-barrel shotgun. He dealt drugs. He was involved with drugs, but he messed up some money with the underworld in Jersey City. Now, for those who don't know Jersey City, Jersey City is considered the same type of community Youngstown, Ohio was back in the day. It was controlled by the underworld. So I lost my brother. And so when I got to Nebraska and the group of us purchased guns, the only thing that was on my mind is wait till I get back home. Thank God I didn't make it back home with the gun, because I wouldn't be here talking to you today. So after we went target shooting, we went back to our rooms and we, let's say, they had drugs. And because of my brother, I said, "Hey, I don't want to do that." So for some way, somehow, they chose me, uh, as a leader. I was chosen as the, uh, captain of football and basketball team. So I, I was chosen as their leader off the gridiron, off the court. So they all came in my room with bags of marijuana. And they poured it on my bed. And, "Whoa, whoa, what's, what's going on? Hey, no, no, I can't, you hold it. Hey, I got some history. I don't do that."
Right, right.
They said, no, they said, uh, "Oh, man, we ain't gonna do nothing," so they mixed it all up. And they got mad. They got mad at one guy from New York, because they knew he didn't have nothing but Oregano in his bag. And so, so he mixed it in there. And when it was time to go, he got some
Right, right, right.
Some good stuff. But they sat there and we listened to some old music, Mary Wells. And they rolled up joints and they was passing it around. I kept saying, "No, no, no." Well, our room was smaller than the room we're in now. And of course, eventually, I got a contact high. And once you get that contact high, well, you don't pass it around, you know, it don't pass you no more.
Right, right.
So time went by and they went to their room. They split their stuff up and they left. There was a knock on the door. I asked, "Who is it?" And I didn't hear what he said. So I reached in my top drawer and I got my gun. It was a twenty-two automatic, a little small one.
Right.
And I asked again, "Who is it?" He said, "This is Nick." Well, Nick Delajonis played tackle next to me on the football field. Great guy. So I opened the door under the influence. And I put the gun in Nick's head. I said, "Nick, well, I'm gonna blow your brains out." He said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, go ahead if that's what you want to do." I don't remember pulling the trigger. But I do remember a loud noise. I shot Nick. Thank God it was a twenty-two. Nick slid down the wall. Interesting enough, the high went away immediately. Now what I'm gonna do, I just lost a brother, second, third day in college. Oh, I do what they do on TV. I went down the hallway, opened the window, threw the gun out the window, came back, checked on Nick. All the guys heard the shot and they came, they looked, and they dispersed.
Boom.
It was Nick and I. Of course, the police was called, ambulance. Uh, I went to jail in Nebraska. Uh, interesting enough, the police chief says to me, "Mel." He didn't cuff me, but he says, "Come on, you can ride up front with me." I'm thinking, "I ain't never seen this before."
Right, right.
He said, "This is my new car. Uh, I can do forty in the first gear." I don't want to hear nothing about that.
Right, right.
You know, but he took, took me to jail, fingerprint. And I'm thinking, "They said, 'Well, is anyone you want to call?" Well, I'm probably four thousand miles from home. My parents don't have any money. They can't help me, and I'm not gonna call them to let them worry about what's gonna happen to me.
Right.
Here in nineteen sixty-two, a black man shot a white athlete in Nebraska. At that time, Scotts Bluff was the third-largest city in Nebraska. Well, I wasn't afraid, because I know what had happened. I know I didn't mean it.
Right, right.
But what went down, went down. I prayed all night. No, I didn't cry. It happened. So I stayed in jail overnight. The next morning, I was released. I didn't have to set up a bail. I didn't have to do anything. The athletic director and the coach, whatever they told them, I was out. The A.D. took me to his house and said, "Mel, you look tired. Take a shower. You go stay in my son's room. He's away from college." "Thank you, sir." Went in his son's room. First thing I seen on the walls was a variety of guns, rifles, shotgun, pistol.
Right.
I didn't want to see that.
Right.
Uh, head of a buffalo, a head of a deer. Oh, I said, "Oh, my God." Yeah, but I did get some sleep. Went back to the dormitory. Of course, all the guys was concerned. And I was worried about Nick. Nick was in the hospital. I was lucky that the bullet hit a bone here and lodged in his head. And to this day, uh, to my knowledge, it's still there. There was a football player named Willie Miller from Astridula, Ohio. He was close to Nick. He had been in touch with Nick throughout the years. And I always ask, "How's Nick?" He said, "He making it." What I did is stopped a potential young man who was very, very talented on the gridiron. He may have had the opportunity of playing pro ball. That bothers me to this day. Willie Miller and I stay in touch. He was there with me when it happened. There's a restaurant where we frequent all the time. You can sit up front in the dining room. You can sit in the back like a bar area, uh, sit at the counter. Word got back to me that Nick's brother was coming to Nebraska on a motorcycle. You see about his brother. So my mind went into defensive mode. So one day, I'm sitting in the back. We usually sit up front, but I said, "I'm gonna sit in the back." And that's, but I'm looking and I see Willie Miller sitting there talking to a guy. And he finally spots me. "Hey, Mel, come on up, come on up." I said, "I'm okay." "Yeah, come on up, Mel." So finally went up. He says, "Mel, I want to introduce you to Nick's brother." I said, "Oh." "Oh, man, I've been nicest guy in the world. Nicest guy in the world." He said, "I talked to my brother. He said it was an accident." I said, "Yes, it was, and I apologize." And we communicated from that point on. I spent my two years there. Got a call from, uh, Gannon, Coach Harding. He says, "I got a scholarship for you at Gannon College. And you can come to Gannon College, get your full ride." I said, "Well, where's Gannon?" He said, "In Pennsylvania." "Erie, Pennsylvania." Well, I never heard of Erie, but all I'm thinking, I played a lot of ball in Philadelphia. And heck, Philadelphia is only hour and a half from Newark. I said, "Oh, yeah, I'll be there. Send me the papers." So I signed, okay? He said, "When you leave Nebraska, could you stop in Erie?" I said, "Yeah." So left Nebraska after two years. Took train to Erie. Coach Harding and Pete Russo met me at the train station. And they took me around. That's where I met Ben Wiley. And Ben was washing the walls of the cafeteria on Seventh and Peach. And Coach introduced me to Ben and said, "I'm leaving here with him for a while." I said, "Okay." First thing Ben says, "You got any place else you can go?" I said, "Yeah, I have, I could have stayed out in the Midwest. I could have went to Nebraska. I could have went to University of Colorado. I had offer to go to University of Wyoming, but I wanted to get out of that environment where I was."
Right, right.
So I came to Erie. And Ben says, "The coach is a nut. You don't want to go here." Now, I'm thinking, "Ben don't want me here, because maybe I'm better than him." But to find out, that wasn't the case. The coach was a little wacky. Great coach.
Right.
But his method is questionable, okay? So I stayed, spent about three days, and then I said, "Well, I'm gonna take the bus home." So I got on the Greyhound. And I went, I'm riding, I'm riding. I said, "Wait a minute, I've been on this bus for four hours." It take me four hours to get to Philly to play ball. I said, "Hey." And he said, "Next stop, Albany. Next stop, the next today." I said, "What?" So when I got home, I looked in my encyclopedia to find out where Erie was. It's that far. I said, "It took me nine, nine and a half, ten hours on the bus to get home." I said, "Oh, I don't want to go there." And my boys, I said, "Spoon, where you, where you going to school?" I said, "Erie." They said, "Man, that's the cold country." I said, "How you know Erie?" "Oh, we know it. That's cold country, man. You gonna be in a mine." I said, "I said, I ain't going underground."
Right, right, right.
So they, uh, so that's how I got to Erie. Came back in September. The coach was smart enough. He looked at my transcript. And he knew Ben was an A student. He knew I was a C student. Questionable. And so Ben became my roommate and my best friend. And every time I wanted to go down to a place called the Pope Hotel and party, Ben says, "You got your homework done?" I said, "Man, I'll do that later." He said, "Get your homework done. I'm going down to Pope." I said, "Now, well, I'm going with you." Now Ben had a snub-nose thirty-eight. He reached for that and said, "Where you going?" I said, "Open my book, because I listened to Ben." And I stayed there and I studied. There was a time where I wanted to cut my eight o'clock class. I said, "I'm not going in today, Ben. I'll go, go later." He said, "Get your behind up." He reached in that drawer again. He said, "You shouldn't have took that eight o'clock class." So from that point on, I, I had all afternoon class.
Right.
But Ben was an inspiration to me. Best friend, very smart, and the good Lord broke the mold once he made Ben. And playing at Gannon, I met a lot of guys that were great. My, another good friend, Calvin Graham, who I played semi-pro with, with the Sunbury Merkureys. Cal went on to play with the Pittsburgh Pipers, and he played in the ABA with Connie Hawkins. And at that time, our college coach, Coach Harding, was the coach, uh, that Cal and Connie played for. He got fired because he punched the owner in the mouth. So he got fired. And that was, when he got fired, I'm here with Bobby Baker, working out, because now I can get a shot.
Right.
Because I know Connie, I know Cal, and I know my old coach.
Right, right.
And he didn't want to punch somebody in the mouth.
He lost his job.
He messed up, not only himself, he messed me up too.
Right, right.
But, uh, that's, that's how I got to Nebraska. And from Nebraska to Erie. And looking back, that was the best move I could make.
So you stayed and you ended up staying in Erie and became a big part of the town. And then you got in, you decided to get into politics, um, on city council and stuff like that. What made you decide to get into politics?
I got into politics because of another dear friend. The late Larry D. Meredith, Attorney Meredith. He was on council and Ben and I worked very closely with him. And his term was running out. He said, "Well, uh, you ever consider running for city?" I said, "Man, I don't want to be bothered with that. Oh, the mess you go through. Somebody got to represent our community." I said, "Well, Larry," I called him L.D., I said, "L.D., you, you find somebody else." He said, "I did." I said, "Who?" He said, "You." I said, "Oh, come on, Al." He said, "Well, just follow me around for a while." So every now and then, I would go to a city council meeting and watch him. He's the first attorney I know that's quiet, very quiet, but gets the job done. He would only speak when it was necessary and when he knew he was right, or he discussed the right thing at the right time. That's how I got into politics. And I watched him go through some stuff. That me, I, I would have been fighting somebody. You know, and, and Larry's not one you want to, you don't want to ever get a quiet man upset. Now, you get him upset, he'll let you know. So I couldn't handle what he had. He said, "Yes, you can." I said, "Larry, I'd be able to knock somebody out." He said, "Well, you have a good attorney in me." I said, "Oh, come on, L.D." But L.D. and I became very, very close. And I began to understand what he meant, that we needed someone to represent our community. And that's the time where Mr. Chris Shaw, uh, Mr. Walzac, Mr. Braybender, uh, Mr. Bagnoni, uh, that crew ran the city under Mayor Tulio. And then there was, uh, Mayor Savaccio. And so Larry convinced me, uh, to run. And I won. Well, I lost the first time. Uh, Fred Rush was my campaign manager. And I lost the first time. Oh, was I hurt. I didn't want to go to work. I thought people was gonna talk about me. "Oh, you're a loser." No, but most people said, "Mel, it was only your first time. Try again." I said, "I don't want to try. I don't want to try." Then I tried again. And I won. And, and this young man that's on council today said to me, and I heard when he said this, I remember saying it to Larry. "Larry, I won. Now what I'm gonna do." I, and, and a young man said that to me in my house. If I win, and what I want to do next. Because you can't go to school and get a course to be a councilman. You can't get a master's degree titled City Council Course. It's something you have to want to do, because you want to create some change, add some change, positive things. But there's no course. And you have to have people in your heart. You have to care about people. It's not about you. It's not being a big guy. It's surely not about money. Larger cities, that's their full-time job. They get forty, fifty, seventy thousand dollars, because that's their job. We get less on council than a part-time job. We don't get minimum wage. We just, look, we just got a raise, I believe, uh, this year, I think it was. And, uh, we have gotten six thousand dollars for the twenty years that I've served, plus the, the extra twenty Mario Bagnoni
Right.
served on, on council. It's not about the money. It's about helping people. And the people you want to help, sometimes those same folks can give you hell. They want you to do things you can't do. They want you to say, "Well, the mayor did this, or the police did this. What you gonna do about it?" There's nothing we can do about it. There's a process. File a complaint. Let us know about it, so we can make sure your complaint is not swept under the rug. But we don't make the last decision on many things. Our job is legislative, create a budget, give it to the city, make sure they continue to stay within the budget lines, keep us informed on all important issues that's coming up. Don't give us any surprises, because we can vote it up or vote it down.
Right. So when you look back at your career on city council and pol- Erie local politics, what do you, what do you think your impact was and like, what are you most proud of, of the whole situation?
Well, I'm most proud, I'm most proud of the people in the city of Erie, the voters, that voted for me time and time and time. That voted for me time and time and time again. That's what I'm most proud of. Is there any one resolution that uh I may have introduced? That uh was passed and and it turned out to be good for the city? I don't keep a written record. I don't keep a mental record. Once it's done. Let the people enjoy what it, it doesn't matter if I presented it or someone else. It's more important that if someone else presented and I support it, I may second it. Or I may. Uh, be one of the four votes. But I don't have on record mentally or otherwise. One thing that I did that I introduced. If it was best for the city, then I'm on, I'm for it.
Anybody that you've served with over the years that you wanna say, hey, this person really like. Inspired me or motive or or kinda like mentored me or anything like that?
Yes. Serving with Mario Bagnoni. He mentored me. He inspired me. And he stopped talking to me for about two months because I voted differently on the issue that. He went, he went and talked to me and that was about the fluoride in the water. Oh, he stopped speaking to me, but I never stopped speaking to him. Uh, every time I see him. Morning Mario. I get a grunt. I said, well, I said, I got a grunt Mario, that's that's doing good. And eventually. It 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 got, it it went away. Who else? Uh, Mr. Jim Thompson. Mr. Jim Thompson. He was a people person. He was the only councilman that I know. If someone call up and said, there's a skunk underneath my porch porch. He would get his cage and go out and trap the skunk. And take the skunk either to the zoo or out to Waterford somewhere. And they start calling him the Skunk Man. You know, as a positive. I'm not getting next to no skunk. Not even close. But he was a people person. Uh, I jo- I I shared the deus with uh Mayor Savaccio. She's a researcher. She'll do her research. And one person I admired. And watched and I being the older statesman. Came to her for advice and that was Ruby Jenkins' husband. When Ruby says she's gonna vote yes. I did no research from that point, cause I know Ruby did. Everything she did. Oh, I wish she was still on there. She was outstanding. And I enjoyed uh the the. Casey's of the world, everyone, I learned personalities. That's how I got along with them. Somehow, some way. Every group. That I've served with as the groups change. Citizens as well as some council would say. Mel, we need you on council. Because you're mo- you're rational. We hear you explain why you vote. And if you didn't agree with something, your explanation was sound. I said, well, that just comes from experience. And. I voted no on some things that I felt was good. And the reason I voted no, because I know the person who's introducing it. Was doing it for his self-satisfaction. That I will not do. And I've seen that. On several occasions. And I will not vote for it. At all.
So um. Thirty-four years ago, um you came up with an idea that's still around today. Um, that's the the Mills, the Spoons Summer Youth Basketball League. Where did that idea come from?
That idea came when I was Deputy Director for Booker T Washington Center. Three young men. Came into the center and said, Mr. Spoon. We don't wanna get in trouble. But we don't have anything to do during the summer. What do you want? He says. Well, we want a a basketball league. I said. The league. I said, you know anything about that? We just wanna play and and keep us out of trouble. I said, okay, let me think about it. So then I did think about it. Two days later, I called them back in. I said. This league is not gonna be a east side league. It's not gonna be west side. I said, it's gonna be an Erie league. Anybody living anywhere can come and play. They said, yeah, we gonna, I said. I will talk to. Folks on the west side and let them know. And they said, okay. So I knew. Joe Blanks well and I knew the family well. And I know one of the young men, young blanks. Was heavily involved on the west side. We call him Little John. I went and talked to Little John. Little John agreed. Nah, ain't no problem, cause there was conflict, east side, west side, heavy. It still exists today, but not as bad as it used to be. So these three gentlemen, I said, well, let's. Let's start a club. They said, what? I said, how many are you? He said, there's seven, eight of us. I said, okay. They came up with some weird names. I said, no, 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 no. You're gonna be the Cosmopolitans. One said, what's the Cosmopolitan? I said, look it up. Look it up. I said, that's class. I say, you're a Cosmopolitan. Of course, being young. They said, well, we gonna call ourselves the Cosmos. I said, okay, you wanna be the Cosmos? That's how that group started. These young men. Got together. I said, okay. We gotta get money and make it work. And I talked to the mayor. In the first two years, the city did not participate. I was working at Pennalec. And so I talked to the regional demand manager there, Frank Mar. He said. What can I do? I said, Mayor, I found out that the property where Hausman Courts was. Is owned by Pennalec. They're gonna put a substation there. He said, we aren't gonna do a substation. I said, there's a basketball court and tennis court there. He said, well, what you need? I said, I need to make two basketball courts. He called the engineers in. And it begins to develop at that point. Called the guys in. I said, I think we're gonna have what we need. But. I have to meet with the powers on the west. And the powers on the east. I said, we ain't gonna have. We're gonna have no fight. I said, you guys gotta have one place you can go where it's safe regardless. One place. They said, yeah. Little John, he said, yeah. I said, okay. We tried. And it's been working. I talked to, and as time go, I had to talk to quote leaders of various gangs in the city. They agreed. People said, well, Mel, how you get them to listen? I said, they they hear me. I said, I respect them. Because I came from that same mold. I know the mentality. I said, when I was in Newark, I was in a club, let's say gang, I was in a gang. But we didn't do what these guys are doing today. I. Was the chief warlord. Of the Conquistadors. The largest club, the largest gang in Central War. My gang, and I wasn't the baddest with the hands. You you see, you see the baddest. Then with his hands on television. And you hear his name. Matter of fact, he and I communicated last night during the fights that was in Newark. Championship fights, fights going on, he and I texted. Boxing Commissioner Larry Hazard. He and I. Were very close, still are. But the thing is, the warlord, me. I say, we're gonna fight this club over here because of. And any one of our members start a fight without my okay, they had to deal with us. We had. Little shit on somebody else's property. We'd take him in there and whip his butt. And the rest of them got the message. We had Baxter Terrace, uh, we had the South Side, we had Behringer. I mean. And everybody stayed in their restricted area. You didn't wanna date no girl over here, cause you gotta go see your girl by yourself. So. You know, that's how. I survived the basketball league here because I've been through.
You understand, right?
And and Larry Hazard. Golden Glove Champ in his weight class for three or four years. Larry Hazard. Gave martial arts instructions to uh two precincts in New York City. He's a black belt. And he's been the, he's also been a principal of West Side High. Retired from that and they called him back to do a charter school principal. He said, man, I did that for two years. The the parents are just outrageous, so he got rid of that. And he went and he went back to uh being the commissioner of boxing in New Jersey. And he's also a commentator on top-ranked boxing. So he's doing fine. I say about eight of the guys that's close to me retired, there are retired teachers, retired principals. To our attorneys. So they they're doing fine. And you never know that we were scuffling in the street. Just like everybody, but. Did our parents know? My mom would kill me. We didn't get in any trouble. We didn't have no police knocking on the door. We just protected each other. We didn't let no bullies bully anybody in our neighborhood. Now, no bullying. And in my neighborhood. I had older guys that I could call on if I got jumped somewhere. They took care of me. I can go anywhere with about four of them. And what I don't see today is. When we played ball. We go to the bar. Now, I ain't old enough to drink at this point. They were. So we go to the bar. They sit at the bar, I sit at the bar. They said, no, you take your little young butt over here and sit in the booth. Okay, I'm sitting by myself now. And they said. They said, well, what do you want to drink? I said, give me what they're drinking. They said, no, give him an orange crushed soda. See? My point is, the older guys then took care of me and raised me when I wasn't with my parents. I don't see a lot of that today, that that frightens me. And that's why I reach out to all these young men, try to talk to them, let them know some of my history. I've been there. And you can make it out as well. Very important. So thirty-four years for the Spoons League, started with the Cosmos. Uh, and it's going. How long will I go? I don't know. Thirty-five years next year. I have businessmen. Uh, that's out there. They said, Mel, this thirty-five years, we gotta do something big. I said, I I don't wanna do nothing big. I just wanna keep the league going. He said, no, no, no. So. There's a group of businessmen and guys that I know. Are getting together to plan something big. I don't know what it is. Uh, hopefully I'm in town and hopefully the good Lord will spare me the uh see the thirty-fifth year. I I hope so.
Right. So what are you most proud of uh that the league has done for the community?
Mostly, the thing I'm most proud of with the league. Is that we haven't had any shootings. We haven't had any major fights. I'm accustomed to two basketball players locking horns on the court. Because I got a hard foul and the ref didn't call it. And I said, you better not do that again. He get in my face. Now we lock horns. I'm accustomed to that, cause I I've done that. In in the playgrounds and when I was in Nebraska. Okay. But my problem is the spectators. Who. See somebody they haven't seen for three weeks that had a problem at a bar somewhere, now you wanna fight here.
Bring it here, right, right.
Yeah, I got a problem with that. And that's why I have Five O there. They're there to stop it. And their presence settles a lot of things. Uh, down before it gets started. My major problem is my girls. Not the girls playing ball, girls that don't play ball. They put on Facebook. Meet me at Spoons. I'll show you. Don't meet at Spoons. Meet at Perry Square. Where you you got the mayor can look out his window and see a nice fight. Uh, the police department got security. Don't come up Spoons. Don't do that. We have our own community of security plus. Uh, Erie Police Department is there. And we haven't had any anything major and and I hope and I thank. Uh, the spectators, the parents who came. Uh, who's there. Who helps out. I appreciate that. Uh, all my uh workers uh do a fine job. They do a fine job. And when I can't make it, if I'm at council and they're playing. I'm dealing council business, but my mind is up on the court. My mind is on the court. I'm thinking, what's going on? My phone didn't buzz. Okay, as soon as council over, I'm on the phone. How did he go? What's going on? Any problem? No, man, everything's fine. I'm good now.
So uh thirty thirty thirty-four years into it. Why, why are you, why didn't you throw your lunch pail in and say, hey, I've I've done, I've done enough? A lot of people say, I've done enough, it's time for me. What keeps you, why, why, why you keep going?
I keep going. Because I like. Because I like helping young men and young ladies. I keep going. Cause I'm not sure. If the next person have the passion that I have. And. It's, it's like a, a, a mom. She birthed this child, she had that love and passion. A stepmom loved the child, but she don't have that same passion. You know, my son. Could do it. And there's, uh, Row Paige could do it. JT has been with me a long time. Do they have that passion? I haven't seen that passion. I haven't felt that passion. If I don't select someone, will it die? I don't know. I know the legacy of Live On, I have. I have grandparents who played in the league. They're now grandparents. And I told, last year I told, uh, a kid. Uh, I said, look, they said, Miss Spoon, you gonna have the league this year? I said, no, I'm tired of y'all, y'all getting on my nerves, leave me alone, you ain't gonna have no league. Grandpa looked at you, Spoon, that same thing you told us. You ain't going nowhere. He right. He right. You know, when it's time to get started, like now, I'm thinking, oh, I wish it was over. But once that ball starts moving, I'm there. And if I'm not at council, I'm there. And when it's over. And I got all this time. I always ask myself, what am I gonna do now? What am I gonna do now? So I am thinking about something to do after the league is over, which deals with basketball. I'm thinking about a weekend, as long as the weather is still good, a weekend, three-on-three. Short weekend, two weekends, boom, three-on-three. And that'll include, uh, you bring your own team. Cause in the Spoons League, we go into a draft like the NBA. So you can't bring a loaded team and beat everybody by forty points. No, we draft them. And all our sparks are filled. Uh, we still have openings for the Bayview Park. Uh, we wanted, I wanted to expand that, cause there's some young kids, nine, ten-year-old, can't get up to Nineteenth Street. So I said, well, let me go down here and offer the same thing. Uh, last few years, it was good. This year, signups were very, very low for Bayview. So we leaving that open. And whenever we can get enough to have four teams in a specific age group, which is nine or ten, eleven, twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. We get four teams, four teams of seven. Cause if you got ten, everybody wants some playing time. So we get four teams of seven in any age group, we're gonna run it. That's why I do it, uh, I like it. It's been around thirty-four years. And we'll do thirty-five, we'll see what that, that brings. What we, we've never had a banquet. You know, so we, we may try to tie that in next year. And the only, uh, one thing we had last year, someone. Shattered the bank board just before the season started last year. And. Before I can send out a call to ask for money to buy a new bank board. When it hit the news, the very next day, Nick Scott Senior called to say. Find out how much it is, where you gotta get it from, I'll write you a check. That's business being part of. GCAC has been part from the beginning, GDIC has been part from the beginning. Uh, all but two years, the city has played in, uh, a very important part. Community centers, uh, played a part in various businesses. Uh, the Housing Authority, they've been with me for thirty-four years. My friend Cal Graham out of Pittsburgh, he's been with me, he sends support up. There was, uh, two years ago, I had to say, no, thank you. I don't have more kids to put your name on the jersey. Well, Mel, I just wanna, I will not take money just to say, well, we got money in the kitty. No, that means I gotta go into this accounting mode. I just want enough to make things happen. I don't want a bank account, I'm not a five-oh-one-C-three, I utilize a five-oh-one-C-three. Uh, so money will go to that organization and I'll request that money to make things happen. But, uh, I don't, I don't wanna build up no account. Now, we also have Biddy Camp. That's going on for seven, eight years. That's my five and six-year-old, my seven-year-olds, my eight and some nines. We, we hold that over at the Eagles Nest Playground, which Bishop Brock named it Spoons Court Two. And he has the baskets over there where I can lower it, where I'm standing underneath. And I can dunk without jumping. So I had a lady take a picture, she got down and pointed up like I was jumping. But, uh, those, those little kids, we don't scrimmage each other, we just go through drills. For three hours a day for a week. It's called Biddy Camp. And those little ones are something else. Those little one, you, you witnessed, uh, Malachi at our last meeting. He won a ball for his efforts and hustling, and he won two trophies. And that's what it's about. These kids will say, I went to Biddy Camp. So. I love what I do for the community, uh, so far the community says, thank you. It, uh, makes me feel real good, whether I'm at a grocery store. Or somewhere else, just walking the street, someone say, Mel, keep it up. Keep it up, you're doing a good job. Those kids love it, I saw a game last week. That's what keep me going. Those type of compliments. And if I hand it over, at some point, I will always have my hand in it. Always.
You wanna say, as we wrap up here today, just wanna say something to the community who has supported you. Behind the people in the league, whether it was voters or the people who helped you in the league, all the kids, and things like, you wanna say something to them as we wrap up?
Yes, I want to say, thank you, I'm appreciative. And everyone, I didn't make this happen. The Erie community make this happen. There is unity in our community. It's no different than you slamming your thumb in the door. You don't cut it off because it's hurting. You let it heal, so you can continue to use five fingers. That's what this community is about. We're gonna have ups and downs, we're gonna have disagreements. The community has made Spoons League a successful league for the kids. We have brought kids and families from Oil City to play. Union City. Quarry. Benango County. They all came. Harbor Creek had a team in it. Northeast had a team in it. You asked me earlier, what is my proudest moment? My proudest moment is when I seen. Whites and blacks and Hispanics. Two or three hundred at the court. And we'll have no problem. Some of my white parents were so comfortable after a while, they didn't watch the game, they brought blankets, laid down in the sun. And when the game was over, the kids got them and they went home. That's what I'm proud, that makes me happy. That makes me happy. And it'll continue. But thank you to the supporters, financial supporters. Because if we didn't, if we lose all our financial support. The only thing we'll lose is the purchase of jerseys. I'll get some referees to do it pro bono. I can get parents to referee. They may not know the rules, they get all of that. But. We play shirts and skins. That's where I grew up, shirts and skins. Now that we have co-ed, we can't do that, you know, but. We would make it work. Nothing's gonna stop us from running, running Spoons League. And please understand, I don't own the league. It's a name, we had to put a name to ask for support. This spoons, that's your league, well, it has my name. That's what it has. It's our league, it's our court. My son and I cleaned the quarter, uh, yesterday, Saturday. Just he and I. We took weed whackers, we took lawnmower. We took sanitizers. We did it because I want you to have a clean, healthy place. To play ball, to congregate. And I'm gonna ask brothers and sisters. You did it last year and the year before. Don't light up your joint. In the bleachers. And then when I walk over, nobody knows. Come on. You got kids there. It's against the law. If you have to do it, do it before you get there. Don't do it there. Help me, help me police our court. I said, our court. That's Spoons Court, our court. Thank you.
Thank you, that was Mr. Witherspoon, uh, Erie City Councilman, and also the founder of. Uh, Spoons Summer Basketball League, uh, thanks for your time today, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.